I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming. So, we have a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
Motion, we have a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? This time we have a moment for a public comment.
Something. My name's Ryan Gadsloff, teacher here at the school, and also a community member. I just wanted to briefly say how proud I was of how the staff and administration handled last week ago Monday's issue with threat made against the school. I thought everybody really stepped up and kept their calm and managed the situation as well as could be expected under those circumstances. It had to be very difficult circumstances. And I would like to read a brief letter on behalf of the staff at the high school, signed by 28 members of the high school staff. Dear School Board of Independent School District 294, the following members of the staff at Houston High School, I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly thank our superintendent, Ms. Kren Abraham, for the action she took on Monday, October 10th, in response to a threat of violence made against Houston Public Schools. In what had to be the most stressful moments of her tenure as district superintendent, Ms. Abraham clearly demonstrated that the safety of students and staff was her highest priority. For remaining calm under difficult circumstances, Houston High School staff and students were shown public appreciation by Houston County Sheriff Mark Engle. The response of staff and students that day was a reflection of the leadership provided by Ms. Abraham. On the evening of October 10th, Ms. Abraham sent an email to HPS staff thanking them for their efforts earlier in the day and updating them in regard to the threat that was made. The email also contained an acknowledgement that areas in need of improvement were identified. It is the mark of an effective leader to seek out and address ways to continually improve an organization, and we are thankful that Ms. Abraham demonstrates that in her role at Houston Public Schools. We strive every day to make Houston High School a safe, encouraging, and dedicated community. We are grateful that our superintendent is dedicated to the safety of students and staff. We want to encourage her to keep up the great work. And that's signed by 28 members of our staff.
Thanks. Anybody else have any?
I am representing elementary at conferences tonight. Also have a letter signed by 20 members of the teaching staff in elementary. Dear members of the school board, on October 10th, Houston Public Schools went into a soft lockdown. This can be a scary situation for parents, kids, and staff. However, the Houston Elementary staff were able to keep, able to keep teaching and continue to put the needs of our students first due to the quick response from our administration. As the end of the day approached, we were told the buses would be loading one at a time. We were also told that walkers would need to be picked up by parents. As a staff member, this got more real. However, everything ran relatively smooth and students were reunited with families. As staff members, we are so thankful for the job our administration did to keep us informed and safe. Ms. Abraham was in the thick of the chaos and worked closely with our principals. As a staff, we feel the safety of students and staff came first and without question. We also feel Ms. Abraham acknowledged the stress we were under and appreciated what we do for students every day with an email that very night. As a staff, we know we will be informed when and if needed. We also know our job is to meet the needs of students. Ms. Abraham and the principals met the need of the safety for all, staff included. As scary as lockdown can be, our safety was a high priority. Administration was under stress also. No one can explain the gut feeling unless you were there. As with any crisis, things need tweaking. However, those that are actually part of the lockdown, administration, staff, and police officers, can and should know what needs to be done differently. For all those who were there that day, job well done. And then Ms. Kren.
Okay. We have more?
It was a team effort.
I did have people say that it was, went well. They were pretty happy about how everything went, even though my kids were a little nervous. But, thanks.
It was a nervous time for all of us.
You never know what's gonna happen, so, thank you, staff and administration. So, you know, I think you guys did an excellent job. So, like you said, it's a team effort. So, without further ado, do we have a motion to approve the consent items?
I'll move to approve the consent items with the removal of Andrew Kennedy.
From the contract?
From the contract section.
Okay. Can I say?
I'll second.
Mimi, say? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Polls? Thank you. Discussion items. Drama, club advisor?
There's a request to add this back. It is something that's in the contract, but it's not anything that we've had anyone that has had an interest in filling in the last couple of years. But now we do have a drama advisor who would like to resurrect the drama club. If we really want to grow drama as an activity and we want to encourage our students to be part of that, the drama club really would be a way to be beneficial to growing the program.
So, are we gonna put that out for, do we have to do anything on that? Except for?
Right now, this is just a discussion item. We're discussing it today, November 1st. It'll come as old business for approval or denial. But I just wanted to give it the time for discussion now and see if any of you had questions.
Anybody have any questions on that?
I assume there's some interest from kids for this?
Lots of interest from the kids, and that's why it's a case where the kids have wanted to go to different plays, in different places, to see what they're doing. They wanted to, back in the stone ages when I was in high school, we would go over to workshops that went on a state and learn how to do stage makeup, or we would learn how to do costuming techniques. And that's something that the kids now have an interest in doing again.
Any other questions? Thanks, Grant. Technology Steering Committee?
At the last board meeting, I was asked to get information from the three schools mentioned. Each has a technology steering committee, and in fact, in looking through our tech plan, the most recent tech plan was created in 2015. There is an advisory group that's listed in there. However, I'm not sure how active that group is at all. There's, there's not a board member listed there, or two board members. But in looking at the other steering committees from other area schools, there are two board members in La Crescent, in Plainview, and in Caledonia's. It's, it's a district committee, not a board subcommittee. So, it'd be like QCOM, or like the district advisory committee. So, it would not be chaired by a board member, but by another member of that group. The other groups meet monthly, or up to twice a quarter. I think Bill from Plainview said that his tech team typically meets about six times a year, which would be bi-monthly, working it out that way. If you want to have that committee from that tech plan kind of resurrected for this activity, we can do that. It's just, would you like to have two board members on that committee as well? That's kind of the question. Would you like that to, to meet more regularly?
Kevin, thoughts on it?
Well, I'd like to hear Mimi's thoughts, because Mimi, Mimi was always active on the issue.
Well, I think that, I mean, we definitely, I don't know who was in the, I assume it's the leadership team. I don't, I don't really know what group of people you're referencing. But it definitely needs to have this company that we hired to do our strategy there, and they need to attend, obviously, and they wouldn't be on that document. And I think that we need at least one or two board members on there, too. I think that we can maybe ask the right questions, make sure things are on track, just that sort of stuff, bring stuff back to the board. I don't think it hurts to have a board member with tech expertise sit in on something like that, because we oftentimes see stuff in business that, you know, people in the school might not be using, but might be great for school use.
Ryan, you have any?
No. So, did the, were the, any of those schools using an outside source for tech support, like we are? And if they were, or is that group involved as well?
La Crescent has their own. However, La Crescent is now in partnership somewhat with Western Technical College, so they have IT people doing their internship under, I can't remember her first name. It, it sounds like Bangba, but I know Bangba's a person from K-12. Pushba, Pushba is at La Crescent. So, they've got people underneath her, as doing an internship. Plainview, Jamilville has a district IT person, and Caledonia has Eric Jervis. As far as the group, it'd be, the district technology advisory committee is, according to the plan, has the superintendent, the director of informational technology, and right now, we have hired Dependable Solutions in that role. So, they are kind of listed under that auspices. The district technology integrationist, the director of curriculum and instruction, director of finance, the gate program coordinator, site administrators, site reps, and community stakeholders. That's, so, that's who's listed right now in our tech plan.
I think a board member would be good, like Mimi said, just for bringing back information, at least one, if not two, if we have two people that are willing to go to them. It doesn't mean that anybody else can't go, you know, like any of those meetings. But it'd be good to have someone there as interaction, you know, because we don't always get reports back on those type of things. So, yeah. And this, anybody else has any agreement, disagreement on that? And meetings wise, I think you guys be flexible, I guess, with a lot of other ones, you know, you have, I don't know if you want to set meetings quarterly, every once a month, or every two months, or how you want to do it. I think at the beginning, I'm assuming you probably need more than, maybe later, once you get things going. So, I think as a committee, you guys can make that decision.
Okay.
Is what I would say.
It'd be nice to see an agenda of what goes on at one of these.
Yeah, that's what we did.
And I think the other thing is, who is responsible for it? I mean, you know, if we had somebody on staff doing this plan for us, obviously, it'd be that person. But are, having Dependable Solutions drive the effort?
Dependable Solutions isn't, as I said, they're at the table.
But who, then who is? That's my question. Is it you? Is it Becky? Is it Gwen? Who is driving the tech plan and including, setting the meetings and then including Dependable Solutions as needed? Because we need someone to be responsible for that completion. And I think that might be what's happening here, is we don't, we don't have that person on staff anymore that used to do that, and we don't want the, we don't want Dependable Solutions to do it.
No, I would think that our IT person would be, I mean, again-
I would say probably either Becky as our tech integrationist, or, or possibly Lisa Shuddy as, as the media teacher at the elementary, or Ryan Gadsloff as our person at the high school.
You could call it here, somebody.
That would be audience.
But I think, I mean, I think you need to look at what their, what their experience is. I mean, to just, I mean, it's a, it's a specific set. Yes, they can lean on Dependable Solutions, but number one, it's gonna take a lot of time and research to figure some of this stuff out. I mean, it's gonna be a huge purchase when we purchase new computers, and we better have looked at all the options and done all the analysis. So, I don't want it to just be somebody, you know, assigned, and it might not be their passion, or they might not have the expertise to complete it. I mean, I don't just want to mark it done. I want it to be-
Well, I don't think you're gonna, I mean, until you sit down as a group and meet, maybe that would be part of the discussion. You know, decide at that first meeting, okay, who do we want to assign the chair of this group? Who's gonna be over it? And maybe you look at responsibilities, look at experience, look at, you know, what do they bring into the table, you know?
I would think the group that Kren mentioned is responsible enough to pick a person.
Well, so, I mean, they can pick their own person. Once you get, once you guys all sit down and talk, talk about it.
And they didn't like, one person has to do everything. They get assigned tasks.
Well, I think, I think-
Exactly. We're micromanaging here almost.
No, we don't do that, but we wanna oversee it, we wanna know what's going on.
Well, I think that the majority of the work is gonna be done by Dependable Solutions, is what I'm trying to get at. I mean, they're the ones with the tech expertise. I mean, and we're gonna have to lean on them and use them wisely, so wherever you want working with them. But I don't necessarily think we have somebody on staff that has that skill set. That's why we hired Dependable Solutions.
Right. But at the same time, that group can let Dependable Solutions know what they're looking for as a group. And the group can come up with a guidelines on-
As long as there's one person that's responding, you know, I mean, somebody has gotta drive it, right?
Well, yeah, exactly. And that's where the group should be able to come up with that whole demand, dynamics of it, how they're gonna do it. So, I say meet, and like Ron said, get a copy of the agenda, what the plan is, and, you know, bring it back to us, kind of see where it's, I don't wanna micromanage it, like Joe said. It's nice to know what's going on and what the direction they're going, and bring something back to the board, so we know.
And the, the plan that we have now, the 2016-18 plan, was based on a survey of needs done in, in May 2015.
Right. So, that's probably changed, you know, so, that's probably the discussion that you guys had. So, have you guys set up a meeting yet, you know, with the next one?
No. I just pulled this out to prepare for this board meeting and to get your, because I wasn't getting-
Well, it sounds like Mimi wants to be part of the, so I let whoever, you know, set up something.
And Mike Lane did, too.
And Mike Lane, so, get them two on the agenda list, so they know what's going on. If anybody from the board has questions or things that they wanna ask, or ideas, take any else-
Are you pointing those two to fill out the year, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just wanna make sure it's not you, Rob?
No, I just wanted to make sure that we all understood each other.
Yeah. Is that okay with you?
I'm a dinosaur.
Anyway, okay. Any other questions on that? Okay, preschool task force?
In looking at the preschool, I know a lot of times we talked about just the funding piece, but there's a lot of other things, and I, other districts are really kind of getting creative with how they are funding preschool to make it very cost-effective for all the students that want to go. But it, it does take some creativity with the application. It does take some, we need to involve the teachers, because we can't just change what we put in that application without impacting their job and, and the way they're doing things. So, that's why I thought if we're, if we're going to really look at funding, if we're really going to look at expanding the, the number of students that can go, we need the teachers at the table, too. For example, right now, with the pathway scholarships, the way they're written, we are getting $24,500, so $24,500 in pathway scholarships. We could get creative with that and get an extra $25,500, about.
On top of the 24?
Mm-hmm. And that would be, which would mean, we would still have a deficit of $13,833. Currently, taking the pathway scholarships that we're getting and subtracting them from the actual cost of our preschool program, $39,333 needs to be funded in tuition, basically, for the program.
And how much are you getting in revenue right now?
For tuition? $39,000.
That's how much, that's how much the kids are paying?
Well, we're doing some deficit spending, so it's-
I thought that, you were saying that was the expense of the program that wasn't covered by these scholarships.
Oh, no, that's-
I'm wondering what the revenue is. So, I pay, let's say I pay $1,000, and there's, I mean, how much are you getting from parents right now? What's the revenue from the parents? See, I look at it just from that perspective of, if, if I pay $1,000, there's 20 of us, and we pay $1,000, that's $20,000. So, if we offer free preschool, the cost is $20,000.
Not necessarily.
Well, I mean, if, I'm simplifying it, but that's a simple way of, you know, that's what we're losing in revenue, is if we give the kids that are paying it for free, that's what we're losing. I mean, the cost of the program is one thing, and the revenue we're getting in is another. So, but, um-
But that, that's why, there's a lot, there's a lot to look at, and we need to really involve the teachers in this, because if we're opening it up, how many kids can they really handle?
Oh, that is, yeah, that could change the cost, because if you bring in another teacher, then your cost is gonna go up.
Normally, I really like the word creative, but occasionally, I find it, it's used to, so, what? Sorry.
Yeah. I, I will try to answer this if I can.
Okay. When we set it up, and initially, and now, we could do some creative things to maximize revenue, they would be all within the rule of law and the utilization of resources that are available, blah, blah, blah.
Right.
You know where I'm going there?
You bet. But the creative line is, is something that, when we called, when Gwen called MDE, that's kind of what she came back with, is yes, some districts have gotten really creative, so they've gotten all the funding.
You mean in their programs?
Yes. But that's why I don't wanna get creative in, in writing up a program without having the teachers at the table to say, is this, is this something that's even practical?
Do it.
If we're gonna write it, we're gonna do it. We're not gonna just write something to get money and then not follow. We're going to-
So, in order to get that extra funding, there's certain things that have to be done during the day. And if we don't have the staffing or material to do that, or if there's an extra cost for that, that's-
That's why I'm suggesting we have a, a task force that actually digs into this, and it still doesn't, even with that, it still wouldn't fund it completely. And so, then we'd have to look at other funding sources.
Subsidizing it somehow.
Right. Subsidizing it somehow. Where would that, where would those subsidies come from? Where, because it would come from the, the general funds, and then that cuts into other budgets.
Isn't that what we're doing right now? Isn't it already in the budget? I mean, we don't cover the costs right now, right?
But that's, we pretty much do. And that's in a, preschool is in the community that, you know, so if we subsidize preschool, community ed can't do that. It would have to come from the general fund, and now you're cutting into the high school and elementary budget.
I think we need to, I mean, last time we talked about the numbers, it seemed like we weren't covering. It was like $150,000 cost, and we were thinking like $50,000 is what we were getting in revenue from different sources. So, I was thinking that, I guess, you're right, we need to sit down and look at the real numbers instead of made up ones, you know, because we're all estimating and see what, I don't wanna say made up, but we're all, we're all estimating off the top of our head and going by memory in the meeting, right? We weren't, we didn't have a sheet to look at. So, I, you know.
Is there gonna be any changes in the laws down the road, coming up?
I was gonna ask that, too.
Right now, you know, we, it's something that we're not starting tomorrow, and after the first year, who knows, you know, what, what's on the docket down the road?
Governor Dayton, this is kind of what he looks at as his potential legacy in pushing the 4K.
So, there could be more money from the state coming for this. So, I think the way to look at it is, let's figure out what the cost is. You know, what is it costiness, with or without? You know, it's $100,000 a year to have preschool in Houston. I don't know if that's true, I'm just using simple numbers. We get X amount of dollars in subsidies right now, you know, what do we get from the parents? What are the costs to the school, or wherever it's coming from?
Community ed.
Community ed. And if we, if, in the first of the year, all of a sudden Dayton says, hey, I'm gonna give Houston $100,000 to cover preschool, I'm not saying he is, in case somebody's asking. But, you know, then we don't have to worry about it. Then we offer it. But if they say, we're gonna give X amount of dollars, there we are to know what our costs are, right? We can just sit down with the teachers and discuss, can we afford this? And if so, where are we gonna get the money from?
Well, as long as we've got tacit approval from MDE, which it sounds as though we have tacit, you know, why not move forward? You know, it's a good thing for the kids.
Oh, yeah.
It's the right thing to do. And then, secondly, as you said, if we, we have our ducks in order and something changes-
Then we're ready, ready to make the change.
Then we're ready to rock and roll.
Because it's, it's also transportation, it's also-
Yeah. Well, and all those things we have-
We don't know, I mean, it's not incremental, because it, you're already doing the transportation.
Right.
Let's get the facts. Let's see how many more kids would come if we did offer it. I mean, it may not be that many more kids that would come if you did offer it, I don't know.
And there are some kids that, that choose not to.
Exactly. So, I think we get, you know, as Joe would say, the facts together and figure out the costing.
And I can- I mean, we can do that for the next meeting or something.
Yeah. And have it on paper, this is what we got, this is what we get.
So, could I talk to Rick about getting the, the teachers together, and is there-
Yeah, why not? Ask them. Especially if you're looking at getting creative-
I mean, we're just looking at the cost. If they wanna bring up other reasons or things that would be added to it, I would submit, go on Rick's list.
And we can cut enrollment at a, I mean, we can say, you know, we're limited to 27 kids, or whatever the teachers can handle. I mean, it is what it is. I mean, or we can say we'll hire-
Just see what the number is.
Just see what the number is. Because I, I would hate to, I'd hate to stop. You know, I mean, if we're gonna do it, we do it. Is my thoughts. You know, if we can offer it, offer it. Try not to stop it, because at the end of the day, it'd just make our community that much stronger, our kids that much, you know, better at school, and it's a win-win, so.
And I think, isn't one of our first, I don't know what they're called, goals, objectives, and world's best workforce, is to make sure every kid is prepared for kindergarten?
Absolutely.
So, why are we charging for preschool? We want every kid, you know, we want every kid prepared, and we wanna do whatever we can to make their, make them prepared. And so, when you have parents calling you saying, you know, I don't know that I can afford to send my kid to preschool, you know-
Well, we don't want that situation.
Well, it happens.
I'm not saying it doesn't.
And it's, it's kinda sad, so, because it's expensive. It's expen, I mean, it's cheap, but it's also, daycare is expensive. So, when you have to pay for preschool on top of daycare, it's costly. Trust me.
But there's also the cost for the school, too, and you've gotta live within our-
Oh, yeah, yeah. That's where you're at.
Right. But I think, you know, we can choose those funds and where they go, and, you know, early childhood is important, and preschool is important.
Well, I think just get the numbers together, we can discuss it from there.
So, the initial numbers. And isn't the task force, isn't the reason for the task force to put together a framework?
Yes.
And along with the numbers? So, we get the numbers first, and then-
Go from there.
Go from there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions concerned on that one? Okay, facility committee recap.
August?
Gary?
Okay, we talked about the long-term project checklist, is that what we call it? Punch list. Punch list. There we go, punch list. And that is well on its way to being close to being closed out. A lot of the stuff that's still on there is either close to being done, or just has, the punch list hasn't been updated yet. I think that's primarily where that's at. So, okay, so, that whole project has went very well, and I certainly wanna thank Kren for all the work she's done for that. There's been a, a lot of hard work, a lot of coordination, a lot of long hours.
Once again, as a team, I was not there by myself, by a long shot.
Okay. Next thing is removal of the house and garage by the- Uh, next thing is removal of the house and garage by the preschool. We've got a good bid that I think we'll go ahead with. Uh, we do need to get the house cleaned out, so we're looking at purchasing a storage container to store all the stuff we want to keep that's in the house and we'll of course get rid of as much as we can. Tree issues, there are some branches that need to be trimmed. Otherwise, that project hopefully will move forward this fall and be done. Hopefully. Uh, next thing is preschool repairs. Uh, the carpet in the basement has been ripped out and I believe everything is dried out and...
And certified dry by ServPro.
Right. So the next thing we need, we're looking at doing is just painting the floor for now and possibly in the future adding some removable foam type of flooring, that interlocking foam flooring, uh, maybe some rugs and that kind of thing, but not going back to reinstalling carpet because this is going to happen again and then it just has to be ripped out.
Is that a, a sealant problem in, in the basement or...
Well, part of the process, I'd like to jump in on Gary's.
Well, it's a basement in Houston.
Yeah. Yeah. And one of the things we're looking at doing is putting some pumps, a few more sump pumps in other locations because right now there's one, maybe two, and they're not necessarily in the best location, so we're going to make, upgrade that sooner than later. Uh, we have somebody coming in to give us some suggestions on locations and getting it done right. Um, so the water will go to the curb, over the curb, curb, so it's out like the city wants it to be. So that's one of the processes. And then do, seal the floor just so it's got like an epoxy sealant like you see in garages with something in there.
Okay, I see what happened.
Hopefully, hopefully it doesn't keep happening.
It's, it's sealed.
I mean, you're going to get something, but if we try to control it.
It can't happen.
Yeah. Ron, don't you listen to him?
I don't have that problem.
You don't have a problem, I hear you.
Our water table is probably a little higher than yours.
Okay, uh, next thing is we talked about outside cameras at the high school and basically, I think, Todd, correct me if I'm wrong, the cameras are okay. We just need the system for the recording and managing of the...
We always got a hard drive for the outside cameras. That drives them.
Right. Okay. So we're looking at replacing that and upgrading the storage to six terabytes.
And it'll go to sixty-four cameras and it can handle the digital, you know, right now it's just all analog, but this one does both, which is a great thing. And we need to have that many terabytes if we're going to be recording digital at the time because it takes a little bit more.
So you got the cameras, just need the recorder, correct?
This is a second one that had a two and this one's a couple thousand dollars to go, which is...
We also talked about the notification system and at the elementary school and basically, I think all that needs is some outside speakers.
Wired to the phone.
Wired to the phone.
And I'm not sure why it didn't get it originally, but it should have.
Right, yeah. We also talked about a request from the Girl Scouts to flood the football, the practice football field for skating, and that would involve a lot of insurance questions, liability questions. So I think what we're going to do is send the information back to them and ask them if they still want to move forward with it in light of all the legal issues.
Who wants that?
Girl Scouts. Nancy Forsythe requested.
Probably some of yours, you're not even going to get, you're going to put this stuff up and not be able to keep ice.
Well, the other thing we talked about as an alternative possibility is working with the nature center and putting one out there. That might be...
The parking lot actually might, you know, they're not using that in the winter as much.
Always pointed.
We haven't talked about that one.
Then you got a, you know, a surface there already. Anyway, just thinking.
What's the difference in liability with ice? I mean, we have like, I mean, we have the basketball courts and that, I mean, is it different? Is it, I, I just don't know.
Well, that, um, the current courts that we have and the current facilities we have are covered under our insurance. If we were going to have an ice rink every winter on our property, they would have to raise the insurance rates for that other, um, athletic type of facility.
So you know what, it would go up?
They didn't say.
She didn't have a price on there. She has said all what, because we didn't look at, increase it. We just asked the question, if we did this, you know, what would it entail? And they said it would be an increasing cost. And basically, they, somebody else would have to take on the liability. And if we did it, then we would be liable for anybody from the school, like a teacher or somebody, which is why the cost would go up. Like if a teacher went out and got hurt, that thing. I'm sure we can find out more information on it, but...
It's also been discussed at Hodown, so maybe after the November meeting we'll know a little more.
Oh, they're talking about them too?
Yeah. Somebody just suggested it and we haven't really pursued it, but having it, you know, in the fast grounds underneath the cover there, which is to the north, which is probably, you could maintain ice there better than you could any place in the town, really. And, uh, so that was just brought up, so it's a possibility.
They'd have to shovel a snowmopping.
Exactly. You could even have a place to sell hot chocolate, which is the most important part of ice skating.
Hot chocolate and marshmallows.
Is it clear that?
Learning something every day.
Uh, the final thing we talked about is a request for renaming of the football field. Currently, the district does not have any policies or procedures for that kind of action, so, um, we decided to postpone any, any action or recommendations pending, you know, gathering more information from other districts and having more discussions.
I think I, I talked to Tom about, I've had one individual call me on a frequent basis and basically, what I told them, and correct me if I'm wrong, but was when Owen Osgard's group came in and they wanted to do something, you know, they sent a representative in, they told us what they would like to do, they gave us the framework and cost and, and they bore the cost. And so that was my suggestion that if they, you know, because that's a procedure that we've been through. So I don't, correct me if I'm wrong, because...
No, that was, that was actually, that was brought up in our conversation in the meeting on it to kind of, you know, that's what we had done in the past. And I think somebody had talked to the same individual just before the meeting. So, uh, just see what, what we're going to do. And we didn't want to just not go into detail on it at all at the meeting because to be honest with you, we have ten items on our meeting list that we started and that was item number six. And we started on the conversation and we thought we don't want to just discuss it for a short period of time. We want to find, get more information on it. So I think we're going to get back to the individual and kind of maybe address that.
Would it be appropriate, I mean, I, I've told him, you need to have someone come in that's going to kind of give the basic framework of what you'd like to do and how you'd like to do it. I mean, there's, that could be in public comment, but I, I said you might want to get on the agenda so you have a little more than two minutes or whatever we have as our timeframe these days, but, um, so you could, we could listen. That doesn't mean you're not making a commitment or anything.
Maybe, yeah.
So I guess it sounds, by the look on people's faces, I'm not the only one getting the calls.
No.
Okay.
Not that I know of. I know I am.
One thing, though, hindsight is always twenty-twenty. If we have a, a group coming in and making a request, one thing that we have to be sure that we do is ask about maintenance. It's, once it's done and handed back to us, how is maintenance going to be, we're going to make sure that the upkeep is there? What, what's going to be done if there is something that needs to be replaced? How is that going to be, be funded? How is that going to be maintained?
And that would be questions we'd have to address when that comes about, so. And now again, we talked a little bit about that, so.
And that was about as far as we got on our list. We got a few more things that we'll pick up at the next meeting.
Which will be November first, the fourth board meeting.
So, um...
Any questions?
Yeah, I see that the priority, priorities for the future and we have that discussion, was it last time or the time before, about addition to the elementary school. So we said we're going to do, we're going to have a discussion about it and we're going to do some research and...
We're waiting on some costs. I think Crin had some information on that. Um, we're trying to get together as far as costs. Is the guy from UNESCO going to be there at the next meeting on the first?
Shannon, Sharon from UNESCO is getting back to me on the twenty-fifth.
Go have that at the next meeting because we didn't have all the information yet at this one.
Okay.
So, because I think somebody's on vacation or off or something. So we didn't have all what we wanted.
Should we look at it from, should we have it on the agenda of our next board meeting? Not to look at it from a facilities perspective, but to look at it from an enrollment perspective and, you know, like analyzing all aspects of it. Um, I just worry we're getting, I mean, we're not going to, we're not going to talk about it and then we're just going to...
Oh, no, it's not, it's, I think it's...
Because we're at a deadline for taxes, right? I mean, we need to get some of that stuff figured out before we set the tax level.
And I don't know if we, we have the meeting before the meeting, it would be kind of short to get...
Except we also have November first. We've got the November eleventh as well before we have the truth in taxation is the first and December sixth. And then the, the levy isn't certified until the, um, it would be the twentieth. I think that's our December meeting, isn't it?
I can't see that we have enough information even. Think about this for next year.
Yeah, we, right now, we just...
I think it's going to take some time to put this together.
Well, we should have it as a discussion, discuss it after we get some information from UNESCO on the cost thing. And we have to look at enrollment.
Taxes for next year.
Well, I don't know.
You?
Well, yeah, I mean, I want to have a discussion. Is it a goal? And then once, if we decide it's a goal, then we'll, we can talk about the funding. If we decide it's not a goal, then no, absolutely it won't affect taxes because we're not going to save for it or we're not going to plan for it, so.
I think once we have our discussion next week, we'll have another meeting. We can probably, we can bring it up at the meeting and then have it a discussion item on the following, the eleventh, you know, ten days later. Because by then we'll have more, we'll be more knowledgeable on it.
On the fifteenth.
Yeah, on the second.
Are you guys looking at enrollment projections and what's coming up and if we need the space and if we, you know, how important...
Well, it was part of our discussion item, you know, as far as how many, you know, what, yeah.
Facilities is taking care of that? Okay, I just want to...
Yeah, because it's got to be paid for and all of those questions have to be answered. Are we going to have enough enrollment, enrollment wise? Is this going to be cost effective? Are we going to have any money coming in?
With enrollment, do we need the space?
Right. I mean, I know we talked about it and I think we do, but that's just maybe me talking. I'm not there and, you know, we need to look at numbers, Gwen and...
Because we've, we've got our bubble class moving through and in, in two years, they will be graduating from the elementary school and then that class will come here.
But if we start doing, obviously we want to increase enrollment here in Houston, so...
Sure, absolutely.
That's got to be part of the, on the agenda, so.
So is it, just so I'm clear on the process, is the Facility Committee analyzing it and making a recommendation to the board or you're just getting information and then we're going to have a discussion about it as a board?
Well, a discussion as, we'll analyze it as far as cost, how much money, where we're going to get the money, all that. Part of the process, because then we can bring it back here and discuss it as a board if it's feasible. Because we don't want to bring something and we don't have all our ducks in a row as far as, you know, this is what it's going to cost us, this is where we're getting our money. Because in the past, when we do facility meetings, before we got this big project, we were doing the same thing. We have things on our docket. We'd sit down, okay, how can we afford this? We give it Gwen, where's the money going to come from? You know, how is it all going to happen? Is it going to take us increase in taxes or is it going to be null? Is it going to be enrollment? We have this, we have, you know, all that. So then we can bring that to the board. All right, Gary?
Well, that, yeah, that, some of that sounds like Finance Committee, though.
Well, yeah, when you're talking money.
And that's why I'm saying is it includes, includes facilities, it includes finance, it includes, you know, the, the preschool and what our plans are, what our strategy is. So that's why I want, you know, I just want to make sure we're trying to look at the whole perspective. Yeah, but I appreciate you guys bringing, because we don't know what any of the numbers are.
Well, I think facilities is just the starting point for some of these ideas and then they, that's where they...
Move it up the chain.
Yeah, move it up the chain.
Finance, then the board, you know, everybody. It's going to take time. You want it done now, right?
Yeah.
I see that look. Want it done now. Okay. Anything else, Gary? Do we have any other questions on the list that Gary brought up? Old business items for discussion and approval. Policy, second reading.
Move to approve policies five twelve, five thirty-one, five thirty-three.
A motion, a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Joe. New business items for discussion and approval. Set a date and time for the World's Best Workforce Public Hearing.
And that's, um, in your packet. We'll get the, um... So if we have the, the hearing on November fifteenth at six-thirty, kind of the same way we do with the truth in taxation. So we start that, um, after six, so at six-thirty during the meeting, we just...
Stop and move on.
Yep. And then we'll have the report scheduled for December sixth and we can approve the report on December sixth and we can have it submitted by, to MDE prior to November, in December fifteenth.
Anybody have any questions?
Is that their deadline?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Move to approve setting the meeting for the World's Best Workforce for November fifteenth.
Second. Second by Kevin. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Student discipline.
This does tie back to the incident, um, last Monday. I have given the chair a resolution, but, uh, and the student will be referred to as Student A in a public hearing or in a public meeting, um, due to willful conduct that significantly disrupted the rights of others to education, the ability of school personnel to perform their duties and school-sponsored extracurricular activities. The student has been recommended for expulsion for the remainder of the school year. There is a resolution that has, um, more detail as far as the student will not be allowed to participate in any Houston public school activities. And, um, is, um, the parents have waived the right to a public hearing and they know that that waiving the right to a hearing meant that they can't, um, basically contest the recommendation that is coming to this board. The parents know the recommendation is coming to the board. The parents got notification that the recommendation for expulsion was going to come to the board. The parents got the notification on October eleventh. There was a, there was a manifestation determination meeting that was held yesterday as well. So we, I have contacted Maggie. I know that we have done every legal step we need to.
So in, in a case like this, does that student have the opportunity to seek some education elsewhere?
Yes.
In another public school?
Yes. And then that, that has already, that has already occurred as far as the student seeking out other...
Okay.
In fact, we, we have sometimes been that institution for other students because we have had students that have enrolled here after they have been expelled from neighboring schools.
So?
What we need to do is...
We need a motion for the...
What we need to do is a motion for the.
We just need a board motion to pass a resolution to expel student A.
So, second.
Motion, my Ron, second by Kevin. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Announcements, important events, election date is November 8th.
16 MSBA.
Oh, another announcement that I didn't put on here and I should have. Red Ribbon Week is going to be the 24th through the 28th at Houston Elementary School. They will have different activities and dress up days throughout the week. That Friday, the 28th of October, they will be having, one of their activities is the in-class parties. They are not going to be having Halloween parties, nor are the students going to be dressing up in Halloween costumes. In talking about the incident that occurred, we could not guarantee that we could put enough stipulations in place where we could guarantee the emotional and psychological safety of some of our younger students. We've got students now that are absolutely petrified of anything that looks remotely like a clown.
McDonald's hates this.
I, I'm right there with McDonald's. But that's, that's in talking about it.
So on the.
So because of this incident, we're not doing anything?
We are, Red Ribbon Week, there's all kinds of, there are all kinds of, it's not that we're not letting the kids have fun. It's just, we're not doing any Halloween costumes. One day, they get to dress up as their favorite character from a book as long as they're not having face paint or a mask or any type of weapon.
Or a tacle.
Yeah. No Pennywise.
Is this something other schools are doing too?
Most other schools do not have Halloween parties anymore. In fact, some of our substitutes are surprised that we still did the Halloween party at the elementary school. And most Halloween parties had been a thing of the past for quite some time. So we have just, this is the incident that spurred us to join the rest.
So then we have the.
And the other, thank you. I just found out today that K-12 lobbyist, Sani, and then John Robinson, who is the K-12 government relations person for the entire Midwest, will be coming to school for the, on the 25th at about 11 o'clock. So.
Four.
Just, just to talk about what legislative things are on our radar, what things we would like them to be aware of or try working for. And so as an invitation, if any of you would like to come and be with.
I was going to say, anybody from online.
Yeah, I'd like to.
Kevin?
And I can.
That's the 25th. That's a Tuesday, next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday.
Already.
Maybe you're going to cut it.
At 11:00. Okay.
I'm not sure if I'm available. I'll know more next week.
Be there, be good, Kevin. Thanks. I know you're a busy man. So, and then MSBA Leadership Conference in January, 12/13. Do we have to book? Is there a timeline on reservations or?
Hasn't been notified yet.
You haven't? Okay.
That can let you know.
Just curious, Sani.
They just released the dates.
Okay. I don't know if anybody thinks about going. So, okay. Meeting and committee updates. We've talked about the facilities.
The District Advisory Committee met and we're looking at ways to make that committee more active and the World's Best Workforce plan and, and the annual report more meaningful for the district.
Anything else?
We had a vote, you had a vote on the MS, was it MSHSL?
Yes.
Would that have that turn out or is it not done?
I have, it's not done yet.
Okay.
But have you gotten your ballot?
Yeah.
And you voted?
Yeah. I will. Do I have to have it in at a certain time or is it passed?
Lisa, you also got a ballot?
No, I did. I'm the des, I did.
Okay.
I can talk to you more about.
Okay.
What it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nothing.
Fine. Okay. Kevin, you have any H-bet or anything going on?
I think I gave the report last.
Yeah, you did. I just thought I'd ask. Anything else, feedback? Good? So we have a motion for adjournment?
Motion.
Second, Kevin. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, people. Appreciate it.
It's been called long, but it was a little stray left over.
So did you have anything? Yours now, right?
No, we're working.